...given by Commissioner Booker, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Browning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, come before you once again, we bow heads and our heart, thanking you for this day, for it truly is a day that you have made. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to bless our employees, heavenly Father, their families, heavenly Father, our citizens, heavenly Father, comfort them, heavenly Father. Right now, where we lost two, heavenly Father, we ask that you also keep a hedge of protection around those who are protecting us, our law enforcement, our military. And heavenly Father, we ask that we be of one mind today, this commission and our citizens, to do your will, heavenly Father, not ours. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We don't have any public comments tonight, but we do have a commission presentation, and it is National Safe Boating Week proclamation recognizing that. Whereas each year during the month of May, the United States Coast Guard joins partners nationwide to raise awareness about boating responsibility. And whereas boating safety starts onshore with individuals preparing a float plan for their passengers, getting a free vessel safety check, and participating in boating safety courses. And whereas they embark, boaters should make sure they check the marine forecast and that all passengers are equipped with a life jacket. And whereas the chance of drowning while wearing a life jacket is one in 66, and the chance of drowning with no life jacket is one in 11. And whereas every two and a half hours, someone is injured or killed in a boating accident. And whereas, to put an end to preventable accidents that claim too many lives each year, individuals should never operate a boat under the influence of drugs or alcohol. And whereas boating is an important part of our national heritage, it is imperative that all individuals operating or occupying a boat follow common sense safety procedures that keep them safe and also keep our lakes, rivers, and oceans safe for all to enjoy. Now therefore, I, Bill Brunson, do hereby recognize May the 19th through the 25th, 2018, as National Safe Boating Week in Glen County, Georgia, and I call this observation to the attention of all our citizens. In witness thereof, I set my hand the 17th day of May, 2018. Bill Brunson. Would the members of Coast Guard like to... Mr. Quigley, would you like to say anything?
(inaudible) We really appreciate the fact that the county has been supporting the safety efforts and everybody, we're seriously afraid of considering this, so we, I wouldn't be able to agree with you.
Well, we appreciate the role of the Coast Guard in that. Excuse me. We have three public hearing items tonight. Bonding land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to the relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number two on the agenda here. Conditional use permit 3733, Jerry's Dog House. Consider request for a conditional use permit to operate a hot dog stand in the existing kiosk at 105 Pier Village Market. The property is zoned village mixed use and island preservation, and a restaurant is a conditional use in the VMU zoning district. Parcel ID 04-07017, Gerald Nardell applicant and GTI LLC owner, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is a conditional use permit. The applicant is Gerald Nardell. The name of his project is Jerry's Duke House. It is located at 105 Pier Village Market, which are the kiosks located in the village This is a zoning map with the location map. It is zoned village mixed use, and the star is on the kiosk where Mr. Nardell is located. It is the one closest to Mallory Street. The conditional use request is to operate a concession business at Pier Village. Restaurants are permitted as a conditional use in this district, and only in this district specifically concession-style food is defined as a restaurant. So that is what has brought Mr. Nardell before you today. He will conduct business from an existing eight-foot-by-12-foot kiosk, and he plans to primarily sell hot dogs, soups, chips, bottled and canned drinks, and other items that are typically considered concession items. And that is defined as a restaurant, which is why he is before you this evening. This is a photograph of the kiosk he currently occupies. Here are the findings for your consideration. The primary customers will be pedestrians and those visiting the village area, and this kiosk is existing and has had other commercial businesses in it. Parking spaces are on-street or in nearby public parking areas. There are currently two signs on the business. And again, this kiosk is existing, and the open space is the pedestrian walkway and gathering space in the common area between the kiosks. The hours and manners of operation, the applicant has stated he plans to be open Monday through Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. He plans to open on some Sundays during peak weekends and for special events. The exterior lighting is already existing. There's no change to the existing site, and there are other restaurants, takeout dining options, and retail uses associated with the village and pier area. The Planning Commission heard this at their public hearing on April 17th, and they unanimously recommended to the Board of Commissioners approval of the application. Here are your possible motions for this CUP and the recommended motion to approve application CUP 3733 as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is present.
Any questions for staff?
Do they have any plans to put up a neon sign?
None that they've told us so far, sir.
Okay, good.
Got the quarter-pound ham, hot dogs? Those are real good.
I apologize for the pronunciation of a duke house. That just sort of slipped by me there somehow or another, but anyway.
It's pronounced dog, it's spelled D-O-O-G.
Doghouse? Doghouse? Okay, okay. This is a public hearing item, and we'll get this thing under control here in a minute. This is a public hearing item, and so if there are no further questions for staff, anyone wishing to...
I'd just like to make a comment. I just noticed, I didn't know that people's appetite for hot dogs went up on the weekend from 10:00 to 2:00. But if I get hungry for a hot dog, I know where to go on the weekend. Thank you.
Like I say, we are going to get this thing under control here in a minute. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in favor of the application may do so at this time.
I'm Julian Smith. I certainly support this, and I'll tell you why. Because this commission is doing so many things that are going to put you in the dog house, so at least you have a place to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. Anyone else wishing to come and speak in favor of the application? Would the applicant like to come forward? This is a different deal. Why don't you come up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us about your...
How's everybody doing? Everybody good? Sean, I take too much of your time. Basic...
State your name for the record.
Gerald Nardell. Gerald Nardell.
Thank you.
Been on the island for 30, 35 years, been working in multiple, couple restaurants. Georgia Sea Grill recently, the last 12 years. Basically, make a long story short, been trying to open my own business on island for a long time. Just been waiting on the right place. I've been waiting on the village area for a long time. One came available on the outside kiosk. I just jumped all over it. I mean, it's something I'm probably going to be there and retire at. I will mention, I will not have neon signs. I will not have styrofoam. I've already gotten with the Visitors Bureau, everything would be biodegradable. I got plenty of trash cans. I'm very aware of the litter problems in the area sometimes. I'm just very conscious about that. I've been working for everybody else my whole life, and it's time to work for myself.
Good for you. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much. It sounds like you're moving in the right direction. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none? Seeing none?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Good luck to you. Item number three, TA 3771, Article 7, Section 727, amendments to the Article 7, Section 727 of the Zoning Ordinance of Glen County Beach and Dune Protection. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, sir. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. You have before you tonight a zoning ordinance amendment. It is case number TA 3771. It is amendments to Section 727, the Beach and Dune Protection Ordinance. The sponsoring commissioners are Chairman Brunson and Commissioner Murphy. We did place proper legal notification in our legal organ, and copies of that are included in this presentation, both the special called Joint Planning Commission meeting and the public hearing that is going to occur this evening. When staff was asked to look at this ordinance, we determined that the current ordinance does not permit or allow for conditional use to be requested for the following uses: beach nourishment and re-nourishment, dune enhancement, sand management, or native landscaping. The ordinance also currently reads that district boundaries are determined by the Board of Commissioners in consultation with the Planning Commission. The county attorney's office prepared a proposed amendment to this that was presented to the Planning Commissions on May 15th to add reference that the district determinations would be made in consultation with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, to add to permitted uses, ongoing maintenance, management, and repair of already authorized conditional uses, and then to add to conditional uses, beach nourishment and re-nourishment, dune enhancement, sand management, and native landscaping, and to add some language specific to activities on Sea Island. These pages were presented to the Planning Commission and to you. This is the staff report, which is the resolution with the intent of the ordinance, with the current existing ordinance, and with an explanation of what's changing in the draft. That's in the red, and again, this is what was presented to the Joint Planning Commissions on Tuesday, May 15th. During their meeting, they did hold a public hearing, and they provided additional comments and recommended some additional language. This is a summary of that. They wanted to clarify the definitions of Area A and Area B. Under uses, they wanted to clarify uses that don't destroy or damage or remove any vegetation growing on a dune. In Section 727.5, it currently lists streets. They wanted to recommend that that be changed to pervious streets to make it more environmentally friendly, and then to add storm drainage systems as a clarification. They requested to delete Section 727.5, Number 3, in its entirety, and a six-month sunset provision for Section 727.8, which is the proposed amendment dealing with Sea Island activities. This is the amendment that's being presented to you tonight. It shows, you're being presented both, so this is the one that has staff amendments along with Planning Commission additions from Tuesday evening. Staff amendments are still in color, and Planning Commission additions are in highlighted And this was added to your packet at the end of your agenda item for this matter, and copies have been made available at the table this evening for the public. The Planning Commissions both held their public hearing, and both Planning Commissions voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments as presented with the revisions during the meeting, with both six to zero votes in favor of that. One Planning Commissioner was missing from each Planning Commission meeting. Here are your possible actions according to Section 1106.1 of the Glen County Zoning Here are your possible motions: to adopt the text amendment that was presented by county staff to the Joint Planning Commissions on May 15th; to adopt the text amendment that incorporates the Planning Commission recommended changes that was approved by them on May 15th; or to adopt with other modifications or amendments as you see fit. Staff and legal counsel are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
I got one. Is this, I noticed you emphasized Sea Island, to do their re-nourishment thing over there. Now, is this also going to, I guess, clarify everything for the state money that we talked about?
Yes, sir. That was the other issue, was that we like to follow the ordinances we set for others, and as it's written today, we would not be able to do the activities that state money has been set aside for us to do. So that is why that list of conditional uses includes dune enhancement, beach nourishment and re-nourishment, native landscape, and sand management. So that will then cover the county's proposed projects also.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I just, I have one. Pam, is the staff good with the amendments that the Planning Commission wanted to put in?
Yes, sir. They mostly clarified existing language that staff wasn't proposing to change at this point. One thing that came up in part of that sunset clause is that they wanted staff to take a comprehensive look at the entire ordinance and potentially come back with a more researched ordinance in the next six months. So that was the reason for that sunset provision.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. This is a public hearing item. Those wishing to speak in favor of the application may do so now. And if you would, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill McHugh. I work with Sea Island. I want to thank everyone for their time here today. Members of the public have joined us to speak on both sides of the issue, and certainly the Commissioners for being here. Appreciate the interest and the sincerity people bring to this issue. From Sea Island's perspective, we're here to ask for a compliance letter and have the ability to do what we've been doing for over 30 years. The ordinance that's the topic of today, you'll notice the first paragraph speaks about the intent to avoid erosion, to protect against erosion. If you go back to the 1970s, Sea Island had a beach system in place that was not a good match to the erosion that they were encountering. So the whole length of the beach became armored in front of the developed area. So if you go from the Sea Island Beach Club to Ocean Forest, you have armament all the way up, and there's very little, if any, high-tide, dry sand beach. So after that armament went in place, Sea Island engaged a bunch of studies, had a trial groin that we put in a place, and then we brought in some sand, and then we brought in some more sand. And so over time, what we did is we brought in 2.5, a little bit more than 2.5 million cubic yards of sand to create dry sand beach. This had the benefit of providing storm protection for the homes on Sea Island, other property on Sea Island. It also provided sea turtle habitat, shorebird habitat, and obviously provided recreation for the people that enjoy Sea Island. And so it's had a tremendous amount of success. And over that period, all of this work that has been done, as sort of one big continuous beach management project, has been supervised at two levels, the Army Corps of Engineer, but more specific for today's understanding, the CRD, the Coastal Resources Division of the State of Georgia, the DNR agency. So when we look at that, as part of the continuation of this work we've been doing, we sought to go ahead and do another 1.3 million cubic yards. So as a result of having two severe storms in an 11-month period, two 100-year storms in an 11-month period, we have to protect the property, the upland property on Sea Island. And so that was the primary driver behind this, is to basically ensure against the next storm. But it also has the same benefits as the other work. We're going to have increased habitat, better area for recreation, but again, the primary driver is to protect the homes and the Sea Island property, Sea Island Company property as well. But you also get the areas, the benefit of a larger beach, so that people can walk from end to end. So as part of that process, we sought to make application, and as the county stated today, they looked at the ordinance, and for the first time, the county said, you know, as we look at this, it could be construed as not necessarily allowing nourishment. So that's what prompted, what brought us here today, and the timeline is driven by the fact that we want to be able to put the work out to bid, get the permitting process done by the state, and put the work out to bid in such a way that we can get the work completed before the turtle season, which is April 1st. I want to talk just for a minute about the DNR and the Coastal Resources Division. The resources they have is tremendous. They have 65 folks that are on the CRD staff. They have ecologists, biologists, fisheries experts, coastal managers, cultural resource experts. They also have non-game experts that are in their building that aren't assigned to CRD, and they also have access to hundreds of experts throughout DNR. They rely on these experts, and they've been applying the Shore Protection Act, which has been in place for 40 years. I think 1978, so 40 years almost exactly, if not exactly. So what happens next is, once we get the permit, the clearance rather, the ordinance amendment, is then DNR will be in a position, through CRD, their division, to put it out on notice, and so public notice. Now, we've shared the application with anyone that we thought might be interested, and it's very, very similar to an application that the Army Corps of Engineers put on notice about two months ago. So they'll put it out on notice. It'll be subject to a 30-day comment period, and the nourishment will get strict scrutiny from both the Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the state. There's a process by which anybody can be heard in the state level and in the Army Corps of Engineers. After that, they'll be, on the state level, DNR will have a hearing with five folks that are on the Shore Protection Committee that have been appointed to that committee and deal with scientific issues all the time, and they have a staff of six people that will prep for that meeting. And anybody can be heard at that hearing. And then, again, even after that, there's an appeal process in place, first an administrative law judge, then to a Glen County trial court, and then appellate work from there forward. So I think that it's appropriate that when we talk about today's events, what we're asking for is the ability to create a beach, to put in, to restore to where we were, to provide the protections that we had prior to these two storms. We're going to have to take our chances with the coming months with this storm season, but we don't want to face another storm season. So that's the driver behind our ask tonight. We're not asking for anything new. We're asking for a continuation of what's been the course of conduct by the county for the past 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is James Holland. I live at 232 Buckswamp Road here in Glen County. I have to speak against this amendment for more than one reason. I'm not used to reading government documents, but I read my butt off trying to understand this amendment this afternoon, okay? And then y'all, I come in here to the meeting to possibly make some reasonable comments, and y'all have changed the darn thing. This ain't right. You need to take this one back and go home, okay? You can't change something in midstream. I don't care how important it is. Then, okay, that's enough right there to tell y'all to deny this, come back later, do something else, or whatever. Now, I've got a question for the committee, commission. Who is this amendment for, anyway? Is it for the staff? Is it for the commission? Is it for Sea Island? Who is it for? The next thing I'd like to know, does any amendment that you've got on this beach stuff out there mirror the Shore Protection Act? I noted in all the amendments that I read this afternoon that DNR, 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 y'all were going to have to consult with DNR. Well, what happens when you don't agree? What happens when they don't agree? You can't have this thing both ways. It's like the Erosion and Sedimentation Act. All of Glen County's ordinances must mirror the State Erosion and Sedimentation Control Act, or you can't have a local issuing authority. Therefore, I don't see any reason how you can be in charge of that beach out there if this doesn't already mirror Shore Protection Act, and it does not, not even close. Next thing, if you people come back with something else, I beg of you, don't do this tonight because you cheated me. I'm not a good reader to start with, but I tried very hard to understand this afternoon and think of what's right and what's wrong. And it was made obvious to me that the only reason that this amendment is wanted or even needed is for eight lots on the spit. Everything in the amendments that I read this afternoon is tied to a stable dune. There ain't even a dune left out there. What do you mean, stable dune? How can you write something before it even gets built? Are y'all going to be responsible for the construction of it after it's done? You must be, because you're telling them how to do it and what they got to do to get this amendment through. Ain't right. Besides, Sea Island acquisition is not a good steward of our beaches and dunes. I proved it over the last four or five years. The horse trails that they had out there for people to ride horseback on is greatly responsible for the damage that was done to the dunes during these past storms. Now, when they rode those horses down into, between the dunes, down onto the beach, every time, we have what y'all call a super tide, which is a normal natural lunar tide. We call them, us old, good old boys call them Martian tides. Well, that tide with a little bit of northeast wind used those horseback riding trails as channels, and it went right up in them. And then when that tide come back out, it took part of the dune, took part of that with it. Look at lot number seven. Lot number seven was the biggest washover out there. It even carried the sand over into the marsh behind it. Well, you want to know why? It was because of that horseback rider's trail right beside it that started it all, and it even got down to where it took the little bit of dune away from that old borrow pit down there, long before these storms ever come. These people are not, you don't owe these people any... These people are not, you don't owe these people anything. I don't owe them anything. They destroyed what I believe in. I hope they're destroying something that y'all believe in, and please, don't let this go tonight, and unless you can get something better, where I can read it and understand it without having to spend 10 hours on it, just deny it.
Mr. Holland?
This is for the public.
Your time is up. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
I'm David Kyler with the Center for a Sustainable Coast, a nonprofit organization that's been around 21 years now. 20 years prior to starting the center, in 97, I worked for the Regional Planning Commission, the APDC, and then the Regional Planning Commission. And I'm quite familiar with ordinances and public notices. I do strongly believe, and I've talked to an attorney about this this afternoon at Southern Environmental Law Center, he concurs with me, that you can't now be considering a draft that's been altered since the notice went out on April 30th. By doing that, you're violating the purpose of the public notice, which is to advise the public on what is to be acted upon, and what's, what's been circulated and available up to now on the web has now been changed. So you can't, you need a different, if you plan on adopting anything recommended by the Planning Commission that alters the draft previously circulated, you need to have a different notification process and a different, start a different, different hearing review. That's pretty clear. So if you want to avoid being in legal violation of public hearing requirements, you're not going to be able to adopt this as recommended by the Planning Commission in this cycle. Secondly, in section one, on the third page of the draft you're looking at, these setbacks not only make no sense, but they're not scientifically supportable and very legally vulnerable. Just logic would tell you that a setback behind a dune, where the dune obviously provides protection from storm surge and flooding, would be less than a protection against an area that has no dune. And yet, the exact opposite is true in this proposal. You suggest a 20-foot setback from mean high water, assuming you can even determine what that is, which is another reason it's legally vulnerable, and yet a 40-foot setback behind a dune, a stable dune. Now, where is the logic there? Obviously, you'd want more protection where there is no dune, and yet you provide half as much protection. And those numbers provided are utterly arbitrary and have no basis in science whatsoever, and everywhere else that has legally defensible shore protection laws base it on an erosion rate that applies to the area of beachfront in question that's being regulated. So that is another very legally vulnerable aspect of what you're proposing here. By providing a temporary provision, as now is the case with the Planning Commission recommendation highlighted on the last page of the draft in front of you, that strongly suggests the county might be taking legal risks in violating of equal protection under the Constitution, because you're providing a temporary provision to allow Sea Island to do its project, which then, terms for which will then be revoked after six months for all future applicants. That strongly suggests an uneven and unfair way of applying the law in protection of public resources in the public interest. And accommodating the deposition south of the existing groin, those last 1,200 feet, as is proposed, would enable and encourage public hazards by developing that reserve project, which has overwhelmingly been demonstrated to be high-risk property, so much so that it doesn't qualify for federally subsidized flood insurance. And that area would only be able to be developed if it were sort of put forth in the guise of being a stable piece of land made, made to look that way by this project, when in fact, it's obviously, by virtue of the storm destruction already done, not a valid upland piece of property that is worth developing if you're concerned about public safety and the investments of people building homes out there. Therefore, I strongly recommend, whatever you adopt, whenever you adopt it, you completely eliminate any possibility of depositions on Sea Island on the 1,200 feet proposed south of the existing south groin on Sea Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application?
I'm Julian Smith, I live on St. Simon's Island. I want to start by saying, I hope you will either get rid of this, or at least table it and have proper public hearings after proper notice of these proposed amendments to the amendment. Mr. Holland is right. This thing is being rushed through. It is only two days after the two joint commissions, IPC and MPC, met in this room and made recommendations to you. That the county attorney was able to incorporate those recommendations, those revisions is wonderful. And I will admit that the changes that the IPC and MPC came up with are a great improvement, but that is no reason to pass this. If you adopt these amendments, you will continue the process of abandoning your duty to represent, represent the citizens of Glen County. The citizens of Glen County will not be able, if you do this, to come to you as elected officials and say, there is something wrong with what is happening on Sea Island or on East Beach, et cetera. Now, the whole notion of nourish, nourishing beaches with sand, or re-nourishing them with sand, is something that is not universally accepted as a good way to deal with the vagaries of Mother Nature. And the only good thing that possibly comes out of re-nourishing the beach on Sea Island with sand pumped out of the ocean, is that a lot of that sand will end up on St. Simon's and will nourish our beaches, sort of secondhand, nature, Mother Nature will have a hand in that. And I wouldn't be surprised if in a few years, if this nourishment continues, that people who own property at the north end of East Beach are going to start complaining that there are dunes coming up in their view, and they don't, they want to see the water. They don't want to see these new dunes. I hope that might happen. The statements about the ability of, now, Sea Island can simply go to DNR when they want to mess around with something called dune enhancement. I have no idea what dune enhancement is, unless it's scooping up front loader piles of sand and pushing them up against the seaward side of a sand dune. Perhaps the crafter of this amendment can, will tell you later, that's, that is or is not what dune enhancement is. I suspect that dune enhancement is going to have something to do with some new houses on, on Sea Island. So if you're going to do this, at least take motion number two. I don't want you to do anything, to approve this, but if you're going to do it, take the least undesirable of your possible motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hey, how you doing? I'm Brad Cursey, and I've been coming, y'all, filming y'all's little commission meetings. I've been here 16 years. I'm from Charleston, South Carolina, and what I'm worried about is when they're dumping or pulling this sand from offshore, is what it's going to affect offshore. You may have St. Simon's thinking they're going to get more sand. Very well, the sand could come out of St. Simon's and go build up on Sea Island, and then you don't have no sand on St. Simon's Island. Army Corps of Engineers made a huge mistake in Charleston. They did the jetties, Folly Beach was a beautiful beach. All the sand got washed out to Mount Pleasant, all the, people lived in Mount Pleasant. They were able to build new homes. Folly Beach lost its whole beach. So I would just say, wherever they're going to pull this sand out of, y'all need to figure out where it's going to come and, and figure out what the consequences is going to be once that sand does come out the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing and hearing none? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to know more about some of the details of this stuff. I mean, this thing's kind of come up here pretty quick, and some of these folks that's been up here, made their comments. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with, you know, what I've heard so far, and I know this re-nourishment thing has been kicked around here for quite a number of years, and there's been quite a bit of objection to, in more than one way, as to, you know, what beach re-nourishment really is, and is it, is it effective, or is it just, you know, putting lipstick on the pig? So I'm, I'm concerned with the fact that even though we're making our, we're making our codes and our ordinances fit the proposed plan, I'm, I'd certainly like to hear, hear more of the facts and understand it a little better as to exactly, well, you know, what the pros and cons are here, because I don't, I don't think anybody sitting at this table understands what has just been said about all this. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt TA 3771 as amended by the Planning Commission on May 15, 2018.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for staff, primarily after the discussions. Pamela, these changes that we saw today, they were based, our recommendations by the IPC and/or MPC, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have they both voted for them unanimously, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This ordinance, is it in accordance with Georgia state and DNR rules, regulations and state law?
We met with DNR in discussing changes to this, and this is a very old ordinance that hasn't been amended in decades. And so there are certain things, such as the definitions of the districts, that are outdated. However, in speaking with DNR staff, they're currently researching the best method to define their areas, and so they felt it was best to make these changes to allow nourishment and re-nourishment activities, and then for us to get with experts and with DNR and to do a comprehensive amendment, such as the definition of our districts, so that it is using the best technology and it, and the best environmental science to make those definitions, and that it agrees with what DNR is using, so that their experts can assist us in those determinations. So, for example, the definitions of A and B, those have been the definitions since the 70s, but we didn't feel it was appropriate to change them for this until we come back and comprehensively look at the whole thing.
Can I assume, and this may be a question for the Sea Island gentleman, that this will not occur until after that, this ordinance is updated to their standards?
The definition of the districts won't impact the project that they have proposed, or that the county has proposed, or the options the county is discussing. This is more for future projects, how to define that.
Because the beach re-nourishment portion of DNR is good with?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Does our ordinance set forth how it's going to be done, or is that pretty much up to DNR to determine that?
It's up to DNR to approve methods and all of that. We just, the wording we added, dune enhancement, sand management, that came from, directly from DNR staff, to make sure that what we were allowing were activities that they regulate and they permit.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just heard that we were telling them how to do it. Okay. Aaron, he's kind of tired. Draft notification issue, do we have an issue with the notification on this? Why?
They're published in the news by law.
Okay, thank you. Including this new language?
The new language was, no, that new language was, was made up or done by the Planning Commission, Joint Planning Commission, on Tuesday, but that's not required to be in the notice. So the notice advises the public of the meetings at which those amendments will be presented.
Thank you.
That was done.
That's good. I'm going to go to equal Constitution. This public hearing that we're holding tonight, is this, does this public hearing meet the Georgia and county requirement for a public hearing on an issue like this?
It does.
So it is a proper public hearing?
It is.
Okay. And my last question for Sea, where's the sand coming from for this beach re-nourishment?
Please come up to the podium, Bill. We can get you on the record.
Yes, sir. We've, we have an offshore dredge proposed. We've done site testing and, you know, excessive, tremendous amount of borings and quality testing. The sand meets the DNR requirements for quality beach sand. There's tests for fines, shell content, you test it at the site. So it's going to be, there are nearshore sources, and I understand the issue raised by the gentleman who asked the question, I think it's a very good question. We have three PhD scientists on the team, coastal science and engineering, and they selected a site that'll be for, it's basically four miles of pipe, just a little bit inside the three miles of the Georgia coastline. So it's going to be, it's going to be as far away as you practically get.
So you're pulling the sand from offshore?
Way offshore, way offshore.
So not right there in, okay.
Right.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Aaron, I'm done, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner, stand by. Could you repeat the very first question that you asked, Pam?
I asked Ms. Thompson if the changes that we heard about tonight, the final changes, were recommended by the IPC and/or MPC, and did they actually, they voted for those unanimously? That's what I asked.
Now, I thought it had something, didn't you ask about, didn't they comply with the state?
My second question was if this ordinance, the ordinance changes we were making complied with Georgia state law.
Is that not a yes or no answer? I never did hear either one, yes or no.
The portions of the ordinance that we are, I don't do a yes or no. The portions of the ordinance that we are changing do comply with the DNR and with Georgia state law. The district issue, they've asked us to work with them, because they are currently redefining their definitions of the districts, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So instead of having us change that, they ask us to hold back doing that until they get theirs upgraded and modified, and then, and I believe that's why we have this moratorium on this, to give the Georgia DNR time to get their issues taken care of, so that we can modify our ordinance to meet what they come up with. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other question? You okay, Commissioner Coleman? All right, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion number two, to adopt 3771 as amended, signify by raising your right hand? That is six. All those opposed? One, six to one. Thank you very much. Good luck on your sand. Item number four, ZV 37- Item number four, ZV 3758, Popeye's Restaurant Sign Variants Consider As Sign Variants From The Glenn County Zoning Ordinance, Article 8, Signs To Install A New Pilot Sign That Exceeds The Square Footage Allowed For Freestanding Sign And Number Of Signs Per Site Allowed By The Code. The property is located at 4933 New Jessup Highway In Zone Freeway Commercial, Partial ID 0304119. Capital Signs and Arning LLC, Allen Agent, and this has been recommended to be deferred to the June 7 meeting.
Yes, sir. Since the applicant submitted their application, the property has actually changed hands and they have not yet produced that new ownership approvals and agent authorization. So we're requesting that you all table this to the June 7 regularly scheduled board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer this to the June 7 meeting.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that is deferred unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all items on consent agenda in the general business with the exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number eight.
All right. Item number eight is pulled. All right. We've got a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item number eight.
Second.
There, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of item number eight signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number eight, authorized phasing of the Coast Guard Drainage Ditch and Recreation Beach Parking Improvement Project and bid Phase A of the project only by authorizing the allocation of up to $154,500 from SPOLOST 5 Drainage Rehab, Rehabilitation and Improvements. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. This project was previously voted on by the Board of Commissioners. It was a drainage and parking improvement project that was put on hold for the completion of the Coast Guard Master Plan, which you all just saw and approved at the first meeting in May. And the Historical Society has asked, in light of their move toward opening the museum, that the project, the drainage portion, be completed. And that project has already been designed. And so the request before you this evening is to split that original project into two phases and authorize us to fake...to bid out Phase A, which is the drainage portion of the project only. Funding from SPOLOST is available.
My question is, it's simple. Does this drainage upgrade that we're doing go hand in hand with the proposal we saw for the complete revamping that we voted on prior?
Yes, sir. The drainage project was designed, assuming that nothing changed with the parking lot. And they are actually in the master plan proposing some changes that will make it better able to drain itself. So we're actually designing, assuming that they can't improve the conditions of the parking lot, but it should improve.
My point is, we're not going to be ripping this up a year from now if the CVB comes through with the financing or the funding to redo that whole area. This will be part of that or incorporated into it?
That's our understanding at this point. We've given our plans to the engineer that they have doing the design work for their plan. There are some landscape areas in the concept master plan you saw last meeting that may be in areas where there's conflict. So we're providing all this information to them so that they can make those...take that into account when they're designing the larger project to bring to you. So maybe...
They haven't done their drainage?
They are doing drainage based on, and this part, I'm not using completely technical terms, but they went below and found that there's better base soil under what is currently in the parking lot. And so their proposal is to go down to that better drainage soil. So that those are the drainage calculations that they're using. This project was designed with what's out there today. So, um, we won't need to replace it because it's not appropriately sized.
Okay, so it will...it can stay in place regardless of what they do?
Yes, sir.
My only concern is we spent $154,000 of SPOLOST money and then they come in and want to rip it all out and redo it.
Yes, sir. It's definitely size for the drainage of the whole site. There were one or two small areas where they showed some plantings that would potentially conflict with this pipe. So that's why we're giving them our plans and saying, please move your concept trees to a little different area so it doesn't impact this. But drainage-wise, this is designed to carry everything.
So we're going to move trees instead of moving pipe?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Jones, would you like to make a comment at all on this? Or I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're here. And if you...if you want to say something, if you don't, just don't.
I'll say something quickly. Thank you. My name is Sherry Jones. The reason that we delayed doing this originally, we had approval from the commission. The reason we delayed the project was in order to make sure we wouldn't have to rip it up based on the master plan. And so I arranged on March 4 a meeting with Paul Andrews. As soon as the master plan was far enough along so that the engineer knew about the stormwater and how we were going to handle it. And so he met with Paul Andrews on March 4 to talk all that through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the Coast Guard Drainage Ditch Recreation Beach Parking Improvement Project and bid Phase A of the project only authorizing the allocation of $154,500 from SPOLOST 5 Drainage Rehabilitation and Improvements.
I have a motion. Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel?
Commissioners, we do have one item of potential litigation. Litigation discussed, please.
All right. I get a motion to...
Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session for pending litigation.
Second.
Potential litigation, Commissioners. Potential.
Potential. Got a motion to come out of executive session?
Yes, sir.
Motion to second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, that I think is unanimous.
Yeah, they're back there behind us.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session of 12, or rather, December 19, 2017.
Second. Got a motion to a second, any discussion? Corrections or additions, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
With Peter.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session dated February 15, 2018.
Got a motion to a second for the minutes of February 15th. Any discussion? Additions, corrections, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that is unanimous. Is that it?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, adjourn.
All those in favor?